Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, June 4th, West Fargo City Commission meeting. First item of Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with the highest standing, with every right and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Next, the order of agenda. You should have some information you received on the consent agenda to approve contract for Storm Sewer District Number 4065. And Erin is not able to be here tonight, so Number One is pulled for tonight. And that's all the changes I have.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item C, approve the minutes of the May 21st meeting.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Any questions on the building permits? If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second. Moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Onto the regular agenda. Item Two, presentation of the City of West Fargo mobile app. Ellen.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor. Thank you for giving me a few minutes of your time tonight. We're excited we're going to be offering a new service to our residents in the form of, oh, maybe it's not, here we go, a mobile app. With over 95% of Americans, okay, it's not. Well, I don't have my PowerPoint on here. There we go. Sorry about that. Okay. So with over 95% of Americans using mobile devices throughout their day, we really wanted to be able to reach out to them and offer a tool that they'll be able to use and help them connect a little bit with the city. So this app has already been built and is ready to be launched barring any suggestions that you may have. The app is included in our website plan, so it was developed at no extra cost to us, and we will be able to offer it free for our residents. In terms of maintenance, there'll be virtually no extra work on Melissa or my part since everything that we put on the website will be automatically added to the app, which is really exciting. Yeah. So Tina had asked that I just walk through some of the features with you today and see if you had any input before we go ahead and formally launch the app. So this is just a screenshot of my phone. You can see over here we have the little My West Fargo logo. Click on that, and people are going to be introduced to that branding that we see all over our town, and then they're going to go to the kind of hub main menu screen for the app. The first two buttons that we have here are Alerts and News. So the Alerts is going to be more for emergent things, safety concerns and things like that that we would publish online. And then the second one is going to be for news, so we can include event stories, more lighthearted, fun stories like that on there. So those are the first two buttons. The next one is going to be a calendar, which includes all of the calendars for all of the departments of the city, also includes the police and libraries and things like that. You can go ahead and click on specific events that are happening and see more information and then share them with your friends via email or text or social media, whatever, right from there. The FAQ section stands for Frequently Asked Questions, and a lot of websites use this. And this is going to encompass pretty much the entire city. So any question a person might have, they might be able to find a pre-formed answer for them in this section of the app. So I just found something about code enforcement, and you can see there's some links there that would bring me right where I needed to go. Agendas and Minutes is helpful for people who want to stay in the know. For the City Commission, you can see we have all the dates here. It actually goes all the way back to 2014, so we could go back and look and see what happened last month, last year. And then you can just download the PDF right to your phone and see the whole thing right there. My mom is really-
Ellen, is that searchable by any chance? Do you know?
Searchable. You can when you're inside a PDF. You can't search it like a broad general term, but you can use the search function and maybe be able to find things. I'll get to that in a little bit. The Pay Utility section is exciting for people who may be on the go and need to handle their bill payments. So that's just going to bring you right to the utility website. Jobs will let you see all of the current offerings the City of West Fargo has for employment, and you can apply right from your phone, too, which is really helpful for people who are also on the go. Notify Me helps people stay in tune with what's going on. So you can sign up for emails, texts, or just to get like push notifications to your phone for whatever you're interested in. So if you want specifically stuff about the library, specifically stuff about the police calendar, you can go ahead and do that. The next few are pretty exciting. We're going, we've been working with GIS to create some interactive maps that people can use. So the first one is the construction map that Melissa and I update when we get new information, and you can see the detours, road closures, the different construction zones, which is really helpful for people, especially this time of year. So we're excited about that one. You can click on the little road, and you can see more information about everything. And yeah, that's a really exciting one. We're also going to have the snowplow tracker, which isn't up during the summer months, but during the winter that'll be nice, and that'll be real-time showing exactly where the snowplows are going to be going, which is helpful for people. This next one is really exciting, too. It's basically an all-encompassing GIS map, which will show things like the city info, parcels, it has zoning information, elementary school zones, and so you can see just a few different screenshots here of the different layers that you can choose depending on what information you're looking for. GIS is still working really hard on this to get even more things on there, so it's really going to be all-encompassing and exciting and a big part of what the app is used for. We're also going to have links for our main community websites, police, fire, libraries, parks, and then West Fargo Public Schools. We also have our Facebook and Twitter accounts linked on there, and then folks can go ahead and contact the city using this form. It's one of the last buttons, so that'll go direct to whatever department that they want to communicate with. And then the last one is the search function that we were talking about. This allows users to search the entire City of West Fargo website from their phone. So if you were looking for something specifically about a specific project, you could go ahead and use the search function, and it'll show you all of the links where that keyword showed up on our website. So that's essentially it. We're really excited about this. It's going to be available for free for the residents for Android and iPhones. It should be launching in the next few weeks barring any, you know, information that you guys want to see or any suggestions you have. Melissa and I will be working on a mobile app campaign to get residents excited about it, so we'll use social media, website, all of our standard channels. And then once again, this was completely free to us through our website subscription, so we're really excited. Do you guys have any questions or comments or suggestions?
I'm sorry. Go ahead. So when you put in, you're saying there's no extra work to it, or anything? You put it into what, to the website, it automatically goes into this app?
Yep. In our website, we use these tools called modules, and basically all of the information that we put in a module will get to its connected app right away, so.
Okay.
Yeah. It's really, it goes hand in hand with our website. A lot of different cities who use our same website service are used this, so.
Pretty impressive.
Yeah. We're really excited, and hopefully we get a lot of people using it, and we can help people stay more connected with all the stuff that's going on, so.
Okay. Well, let us know the day it goes live.
Yeah, for sure.
We can download it.
For sure.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Item Number Two, review proposed changes to the West Fargo Transit Route. Larry.
Goodness, Your Honor, members of the Commission. The metro area transit is looking at making some changes to bus routes, minor tweaks in our case, and Sage Thornbrows is here to go over that with you.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Give me one second. Let me get this pulled up. So we just got a couple of proposed changes that we want to go over with you today. First of all, Route 24 currently runs out of West Dakers down to Eagle Run, hitting hotspots such as Shields Arena, Cashwise, Costco, all those sorts of high-traffic areas in West Fargo. Right now, it runs along 23rd Avenue South before entering into the Sanford Medical Center. And instead, our proposed change is to turn into the Agassi Crossing to service the new Ronald McDonald House that went into service, I believe, at the beginning of May. So that is our first requested motion, is to approve the recommended change to Route 24. Second change, currently right now, we run Route 21 and 22. 21 was implemented in July of last year to serve the Cass County Jail and the Somali Business Center, while 22 serves the West Fargo portion coming up here, West Fargo High Rise, and Walmart as well. And some of the issues that we're kind of experiencing with it are on-time performance because Route 22 takes more time than it's currently given. Right now, it's a 30-minute route, but it realistically takes about 35 to 38, depending upon traffic and other backups that happen, especially along 13th Ave. So we get a lot of missed trips. There's been a lot of passenger complaints about it being on time, and a lot, like I said, lots of construction, especially on 13th. So our proposed change, Route 21 currently only takes 22 minutes, so we don't want to make any actual route changes. What we're proposing to do is to just combine them into one Route 20. Therefore, we can take those eight extra minutes from Route 21 and give that to Route 22 to give it more time to complete the route, be on time, and provide a better service to our passengers. That is our second requested motion, is to approve the combining of Routes 21 and 22 to Route 20, so that we can better serve people and have better on-time performance.
Any questions? Just a question, that 24 is a new route. How's the rider, excuse me, ridership been on that?
24's been doing pretty well. It started off in the thousands, lower thousands, and it usually takes about two years or so for a route to really be gauged as to how good it's going to be, and it's been consistently trending upwards. I think it's been adding a couple of hundred every month or so. So people are really starting to see the benefits of using it, especially the Sanford Medical Center. You get a good bit of ridership to Cashwise and Costco as well. So it's been improving on a monthly basis.
When you talk about the time change, like, what does the time change say in front of the High Rise as far as the time it comes now and the new time?
Well, so currently, both of these routes, I should clarify, both these routes run on 30 minutes in their inner lines, so 22 will run for half an hour, and then it becomes 21. But they both are only given 30 minutes right now, so we're not actually, for example, to get from the High Rise, because we stop right before the High Rise at the elementary school, and right now, we have three minutes to do that, and that's more time than it really needs, so we're wasting a lot of time sitting at the elementary school. So apart from giving the extra time from Route 21 to 22, we just want to make a couple of little adjustments so that, you know, we're not sitting, wasting time when that time can be used, you know, giving more time to get from the Sanford to Walmart and things like that. So no actual changes with regards to how frequently it services West Dakers or anything like that, but.
Do you happen to know what the ridership is from the High Rise?
From the High Rise? I do not, off the top of my head, no.
John, can we take this in one motion? Would be to, motion then would be to follow the recommendation of the changes in the transit route as proposed. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item Four, approve the amendment of engineering contract for Cheyenne Street Segment Three. Chris.
Goodness, Your Honor, Members of the Commission. The metro area transit is looking at making some changes to bus routes, minor tweaks in our case, and Sage Thornbrows is here to go over that with you.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Give me one second. Let me get this pulled up. So we just got a couple of proposed changes that we want to go over with you today. First of all, Route 24 currently runs out of West Dakers down to Eagle Run, hitting hotspots such as Shields Arena, Cashwise, Costco, all those sorts of high-traffic areas in West Fargo. Right now, it runs along 23rd Avenue South before entering into the Sanford Medical Center. And instead, our proposed change is to turn into the Agassi Crossing to service the new Ronald McDonald House that went into service, I believe, at the beginning of May. So that is our first requested motion, is to approve the recommended change to Route 24. Second change, currently right now, we run Route 21 and 22. 21 was implemented in July of last year to serve the Cass County Jail and the Somali Business Center, while 22 serves the West Fargo portion coming up here, West Fargo High Rise, and Walmart as well. And some of the issues that we're kind of experiencing with it are on-time performance because Route 22 takes more time than it's currently given. Right now, it's a 30-minute route, but it realistically takes about 35 to 38, depending upon traffic and other backups that happen, especially along 13th Ave. So we get a lot of missed trips. There's been a lot of passenger complaints about it being on time, and a lot, like I said, lots of construction, especially on 13th. So our proposed change, Route 21 currently only takes 22 minutes, so we don't want to make any actual route changes. What we're proposing to do is to just combine them into one Route 20. Therefore, we can take those eight extra minutes from Route 21 and give that to Route 22 to give it more time to complete the route, be on time, and provide a better service to our passengers. And that is our second requested motion, is to approve the combining of Routes 21 and 22 to Route 20, so that we can better serve people and have better on-time performance.
Any questions? Just a question, that 24 is a new route. How's the rider, excuse me, ridership been on that?
24's been doing pretty well. It started off in the thousands, lower thousands, and it usually takes about two years or so for a route to really be gauged as to how good it's going to be, and it's been consistently trending upwards. I think it's been adding a couple of hundred every month or so. So people are really starting to see the benefits of using it, especially the Sanford Medical Center. You get a good bit of ridership to Cashwise and Costco as well. So it's been improving on a monthly basis.
When you talk about the time change, like, what does the time change say in front of the High Rise as far as the time it comes now and the new time?
Well, so currently, both of these routes, I should clarify, both these routes run on 30 minutes in their inner line, so 22 will run for half an hour, and then it becomes 21. But they both are only given 30 minutes right now, so we're not actually, for example, to get from the High Rise, because we stop right before the High Rise at the elementary school, and right now, we have three minutes to do that, and that's more time than it really needs, so we're wasting a lot of time sitting at the elementary school. So apart from giving the extra time from Route 21 to 22, we just want to make a couple of little adjustments so that, you know, we're not sitting, wasting time when that time can be used, you know, giving more time to get from the Sanford to Walmart and things like that. So no actual changes with regards to how frequently it services West Dakers or anything like that, but.
Do you happen to know what the ridership is from the High Rise?
From the High Rise? I do not, off the top of my head, no.
John, can we take this in one motion? Would be to, motion then would be to follow the recommendation of the changes in the transit route as proposed. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item Four, approve the amendment of engineering contract for Cheyenne Street Segment Three. Chris.
Goodness, Your Honor, Members of the Commission. In front of you tonight is Amendment Number Four for the engineering contract for the Cheyenne Street. Remember, when we first selected KLJ Engineering for this, we set a backbone of a contract, knowing that there'd be amendments for each different segment. There is one for the environmental document, there are one for design of Segment One, Segment Two. Now we're up here for Segment Three, which is Segment from 32nd Avenue to 40th Avenue. Their cost not to exceed is $1.1 million, $63,961. That's about 8.7% of the project cost, and we're working at a November 18th did date. So it's going to be a pretty accelerated schedule. They're planning to have plans complete roughly about end of July. Available for any questions.
Any questions to Chris? If not, do I hear a motion to approve? I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item Five, review the bid tab for Sewer Improvement Project Number 1308. Justin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Commission. This project is our connection to the Fargo wastewater system. Received four bids, and three of them were much higher than our engineer's estimate. Looking at the results, the majority of that difference ended up in one or two bid items. For example, the pipe cost, there was a $20 a foot of price increase with the other bidders. Dakota Underground was the low bid, in that they were right around our engineer's estimate, so we're confident going forward with awarding a contract to Dakota Underground for their bid of $4,664,455.
Can you give me a timetable on that again? When they're going to start and end and all that?
They are actually, they're trying to schedule a pre-construction meeting this week. They want to get going on ordering the materials. They hope to start within the next two weeks, so by mid-June possibly is when they would start mobilizing equipment. Takes a couple of weeks to start fabricating the manholes and certain things like that, get the materials in, but once they get started, then it'll be, they're going to start on 12th Avenue where the list station is, over by Public Works. They'll work their way north up to 19th Avenue. Now, the corridor along 19th Avenue, we still have a few properties where we're working on easements, so we're hoping to have all of that spread away by the time Dakota Underground's ready to go along 19th Avenue. So we're anticipating the first mile there is going to be about a month of construction, maybe less, depending on weather. And then once they can turn the corner and go get across the river on 19th, and then head over to 9th Street where they make that final connection over to Fargo, and I would anticipate, again, all things go well, we should be done by October 1st.
John, where are we at with the easements? Where are we at with the easements?
On 1308, they're currently undertaking appraisals for the properties that need to be condemned. We haven't gotten the final appraisals back from the appraiser, so we'll need that just prior to initiating the eminent domain action. There was a little bit of, it always takes a little bit of time for the appraisers to get back to us. So that's currently where we're at. As soon as we get the appraisals back, we make the final offers, and then we initiate quick take. To be frank, I think some of the property owners probably will not accept what the appraisals are, just because they don't agree with the project or have probably higher expectations through land value. But we'll-
Is it, so in the long run, is that going to be a hindrance in getting this done by Dustin's estimated date, or?
Well, so at this point, we did include in the contract that the, not all right-of-way has been acquired yet, and so a notice to proceed will be issued from the city when that acquisition takes place. If the quick take process drags out, yes, there inevitably could be a delay in the construction. I'm pretty confident that, you know, worst-case scenario with the quick take, John, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we would be done with that by August. That's worst-case scenario, which still gives the contractor then two months to get all the pipe in along 19th Avenue, which is about a mile and a half, which is more than reasonable. Again, depending on weather and barring those snags in the soils or anything like that, so we're still pretty confident that even though we're in this lull with the right-of-way, that we'll get the project done by October.
When do we start this process, John? Was it January, or has it been to spring?
I want to say that you, we were, we've been negotiating with the property owners, or more engineering has been negotiating with the property owners, early, probably January.
December was when we sent out the first offer. And I believe we asked to go with eminent domain sometime in March, April?
Yeah, March or April. I'd have to double-check, but that sounds about right. And then we engaged, immediately after that, we engaged the appraisers. The appraisers in this market have been taking quite a while to get their appraisals done. It's, no matter how much we push them, they take the time they need to take. We do have the ability, even if the appraisal's not quite finished, we can still move forward with the quick take action. We'd just like to have the appraisal nearly finalized before, and make that final offer before we pull the trigger on the quick take to give the property owner one more chance to see what the appraisal says. If they're unwilling to do it, then we actually move forward with the eminent domain action.
You'll keep us appraised where we're at with this?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions? Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item Six, review liquor license application for Awake LLC. Tina.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. At the, at one of our prior meetings in May, I'm going to have the daybreak in front of me, we had the application for Awake LLC, and there were some concerns over the experience of a person that would be managing it, if they were experienced enough to manage a bar, restaurant, or bar. And so after that, we, and I cannot, I cannot pronounce your name, I apologize. After that, the applicant went and she found another individual who is experienced in management of restaurants and bars. She's got her list, she's worked at Wasabi's, Colby's, Osaka, quite a few places. The police did do, you know, a limited background check. Everything checked out fine. At this point, barring any other issues, I have a recommendation for approval.
Any questions to Tina?
And the applicant is here, if you have questions for them.
Any questions to Tina or the applicants? If not, do I hear a motion?
Second.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item Seven, review Red River Valley Fair Annexation and Development Agreement. Tina and Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commission. In February 2017, an idea was floated out there about a possible convention space being discussed out at the Red River Valley Fair. At the time, it was just a idea, hadn't been vetted in any way, shape, or form. It had some general concepts that individually got floated by you guys, but no serious discussion had been had. That prolonged for about a year, that general discussion, without any tangible, anything to look at and review. January of this year, I sent out an email kind of outlining, these are the steps I feel like it takes for the, to get you the information where you can make an informed decision, yes or no. In the email, I make it clear, I want to take one step at a time because it's a big decision, and I imagine that there'll be different feedback at different times to, on how you want to review each section. And so on Thursday, we sent out, or I'm sorry, Friday of last week, we sent out a draft agreement. In my view, this is step one. We're still there. It's a draft. I'm sure there's lots of comments. There are, you know, you haven't had a ton of time to review it, which I think is necessary. Really, what I want to do is open up the discussion, it's the first time that all of you have sat down together and had something tangible to really look at, and talk about how to move forward. You know, the possibilities could be a subcommittee to look at the individual items of the agreement. There's public engagement that I'm sure could happen from this point going forward, or how do you want to see that? If you get to a point where you're fully comfortable with the annexation and the memorandum, and that gets vetted out, then there needs to be a, a, in my opinion, a partnership between the CVB, ourselves, and the Red River Valley Fair, where you go and hire a consultant that can study the feasibility. That's not me, that's someone who knows what they're talking about, to talk about, A, what type of events would go into this facility, how, you know, what kind of money would that generate, and then what does it cost to run such a facility? You get past that, then, and everybody feels comfortable, then you go to the next step, and you say, okay, how do we get to what this facility should cost? And in that feasibility study, maybe there's a conversation, this is the wrong facility, or it needs to be something else. I think you have to get to that point. And then, at the very end, you have all of that information, you finish up what could be a financial, financial package, and it goes all at once to both boards to consider.
Matt, if we were to do a feasibility study, who would pay for that? Where, where would that, that funding come from? Would that be?
Again, in my, in my mind, it's a partnership, because there's a lot of vested parties, it would be the, ourselves, Red River Valley Fair primarily, and then the CVB as well. Hopefully, it would come in to help, help us study this, the viability, because it would benefit all parties.
It wouldn't be all on the city, is what I'm saying. Hopefully not.
Not in my...
In your scenario?
Yeah. I'm making this up as I go, there's no right or wrong answer to get here. Surely, if there's strong opinions, I take them, just give me a direction, tell me to march. I, my, what I wanted to get to you is, here's where we started, here's where we are today, you know, what would you like to do to move forward?
Any questions to Matt?
Well, I think that having a convention center in the City of West Fargo would be wonderful. I have serious concerns about the city being involved in the financing of that whole thing. I also have concerns about whether that's a good location. It wasn't very long ago that Fargo Forum, I'm not sure if that was you, Charlie, who it was, was talking about, convention center wasn't even, that wasn't even a good spot, or was, we didn't even want to have a convention center in the city, in this metro area, and all of a sudden, here we are. I, you know, I mean, how do you, how do we justify, you know, what's just going on the, on the hoof for all that? And this annexation agreement, and quite frankly, the memorandum agreement has a lot of issues in it, a lot of issues, that personally, I can't live with.
Yeah, and that's great feedback. I mean, that's what we expect, is to open up that conversation. I think the convention center conversation is a philosophical discussion. You know, as a, as a city commission, philosophically, do you want this amenity or facility? And, and is that something that interests you? You know, I'm sure there are things in the annexation agreement that both parties still at this point should have, you know, questions and comments on, and again, some of that's philosophical as well. And so, that's the point of today, is to talk about it. You know, and really, what I was looking for is to open up this discussion and talk about that outline going forward. How do you, you know, how do you pick through this, and then how do we get the information back, so that you can all discuss it openly and move on? One way or the other.
I mean, they've been talking about convention centers in this town for a long time. You know, if there's that much money in them, and much, much money in that whole development thing, then where is all the big developers in this community, and why aren't they sitting lying waiting to do it? Yet, they want the City of West Fargo to go out there and throw in our taxpayer dollars to fund that, at great risk, you know, to the taxpayers of this community. I don't, I can't, I'm having a hard time understanding that.
I concur with Commissioner Hanson. The other thing is, this is a very large civic pro, project we're talking, and there's been other ideas that have been talked about over the years, and we definitely need public involvement on this. This is not a commission decision, in my opinion. And I, I've got, I've got several questions, I didn't bring them with me, and just with the limited time we had to review those documents. And number one is, I think we're going to suck up all our tax dollars with a commitment to this project, from our sales tax dollars, at least when I read off, at the front end of it. So, there's a lot of questions. I don't fault you for bringing it forward, I think we have to look at every idea, and vet them out, and come up with a good idea. I'd love to see some of that property, that extra property the fair has in the city, and put to good use if possible, but I think it's good information to receive at this point, and let us digest it, and let the public, you know, give us some feedback on it, but I think we're, you know, a long ways, in my opinion, from making any kind of decision.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. Like I said, I, I see it as a multiple step process. There are philosophical discussions that have to happen. You know, I can provide feedback or perspective, so can staff and Red River Valley Fair, but ultimately, I would agree, the intention is not for you to look at it for three days and then turn around, and if that was the impression that people got, my apologies, that, that wasn't the intent. It was a review, based on the previous email that I had sent out, saying, A, we're, we've got something to look at now. We're, you know, how would you like to proceed?
I would, you know, also, I guess, make the commission and everybody aware that to look at the bigger picture here, too, isn't just a matter of building a convention center, and using some tax, taxpayer dollars, it's what that convention center could possibly bring to West Fargo, as motels and people. And, and, I mean, otherwise, we wouldn't even need Charlie, I guess, if we went with that entire attitude, that we don't, we don't want to bring in new people. I mean, that's, that's the point of, I think we all know convention centers do not make money. It's, it's what they bring in behind the scene that makes the money. It's, it's the food, the restaurants, the hotels, and making our city better. So, I'm not saying jump in and do it, but I'm saying we should, we should at least look at that portion of it as well.
Again, philosophical, you know, my approach has been, you know, trying to take it one step at a time. You know, if it's a big idea, how do you, how do you get from idea to step one, to where we are today? We got to have vet step one, and then how do you go to step two? And so, you know, public engagement, I, you know, I guess I assumed that was, it wouldn't go forward without public engagement, but this is why we're here today. Again, I'll repeat that, is that this is exactly what I think a lot of people wanted to start with. Probably some debate on where or when to start, but that's what we're here for today, is to kind of open up the discussion and talk about, what are the next steps, how do we go forward? An engineer one time told me that sometimes studies are, are great, because they move the ball forward, sometimes studies are great because they, they help eliminate ideas. And again, we're at that crossroads right now. You know, how do we, how do we go, in what direction?
So, what you're asking today, just so, you just want us to read it? Take it in?
Yeah, yeah, open up the discussion. Bring me feedback. I've gotten some feedback already, a lot of it, frankly. And again, it's just to go through it and say, okay, if we want to continue to vet this, here's the information we need. I, I clearly gave you what I thought was appropriate information, but there's probably more. If I'm sitting in your, your shoes, maybe there's something that I'm not thinking about that you are. And then, how do we get to that next, next level?
You know, I really think that at some point in time, or before, and we can certainly look at all that stuff, Matt, but I mean, we really need to have a conversation as a commission, as to whether we want to be in the convention center business or not. Because until we decide that, the rest of this is just, we're just spending money for fun. I mean, no more revisions to the annexation, no more revisions to the MOU, and enough money spent on attorneys, until we decide whether they're going to be in the business or not. I mean, it's ridiculous, what we've spent on attorney fees already.
I guess, how, my, I, just a question, how would we know that if we, if we didn't do a feasibility study? How would we determine if we're, if we should be in the business or not, or how do, how do we determine how that would affect our community and our citizens, if we didn't do a feasibility study?
Correct. I think that's a, it, again, it's a philosophical discussion. Certainly, from my perspective, I felt like taking steps forward to get some tangible things to look at were imperative to the discussion. But you could also go back to the very beginning and, and say, hey, you know, where do we want to be in 10 or 15 years? Is this a part of our story or not? You know, that's not my job to necessarily, you know, push one way or the other. However, to your point, how do, you know, how do we start that discussion, to go back to the beginning? How do you want to see that going forward? And how do you want to communicate that to me and the rest, and Tina? That's really why we're here today, is, you know, what is, what do you want to see from us to help facilitate that discussion, to, to make those decisions?
Right. There again, if, if we want to have a convention center in the city, that's great, but as a city involved beyond helping annex property and making that whole thing work with the fairgrounds, are we in it with money? There's a whole different deal there, huge.
Correct.
So, I agree with you, Mark. Yeah, that would be great, but are we spending taxpayer funds, or are we going out and finding people that think this is a good deal for the whole community, and we're getting public involvement and letting them do that, and we do what we should do as a city, which is, you know, work around the edges and make it all work with the fair association, and so forth and so on? Not take 100% of our 2% of our sales tax money for something that we've already, we've already got a list for that money already, and, and put it towards this. I mean, it doesn't, there's not enough money, you guys. It doesn't work.
So, Matt, could you go back to the table and, I guess, try to figure out, so we'd have an idea, because I'm not an expert on any of this, I don't think any of us are, I think, but I do think we have to look for the future. I think we, that's our job, is to, you know, determine where we're going to go. And the only way to do that is with experts giving us some information. So, my question would be, can you go back and try to figure out how much it would cost to do a feasibility study, and most importantly, who would all pay for it? Whether the fair committee or the CVB would go in on it? I think that would be a good question, you know, to help us make a decision.
Yeah.
In my opinion.
That's no problem. And in my email, you know, I laid that out, is, you know, if you go to a feasibility study conversation and get to that level, you know, you'd have to approve that as well. And so, like I said, one step at a time. Clearly, you know, there's philosophical discussions that need to happen, how do we facilitate it, and get decision one way or the other, so.
Does that sound agreeable to all of you?
I, I wouldn't take any, I would recommend not taking any action at this time, just receiving the report, that'd be my, my thought, and I mean, I'm with Commissioner Hanson, that I worry about, with revenues, we're not going to have a dime left. Commit all this, our sales tax to a project like this, and personally, I think we have to engage the public as the interest of it, and we, you know, you can say, maybe the general public doesn't understand the overall thing, but heck, it's their money, and they're going to be on the hook for it. I think that's where we need to start to see what the interest is. Now, I believe we need to define what kind of facility you're really looking at.
Yeah.
Because I, quite frankly, I, I can't envision just the average convention going out on the edge of town with nothing else, no other amenities for people to enjoy. However, maybe an exposition type center or something, something different, but that's why, before you go to a feasibility study, I think you got to really know, A, that the people want to support it, B, we can support it financially, exactly what kind of facility you're thinking about, to see if it's feasible, and we, we need that feedback from the CVB too, as to what demand there is out there, before we go to spending two cents on anything.
So, maybe, maybe a public engagement plan first, you know?
I guess, and the cost, the cost.
Brian, how many weekends are you booked out there? There we go. So, on a lot of those weekends, are you going to be, is it going to be other, I mean, things going on, so we're going to try to bring a convention out there, and you've got something else going on out there that may not exactly work together with that convention coming into town? Would that be an issue?
Brian, you want to come up here?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, we've looked at all this. We've been doing this for two years, looking at this plan and what it can do, so I guess, sitting in the back of the room, I kind of wonder where everybody's been. I mean, it's been in the media, it's been, we've been talking about it, to answer your questioner, question, Commissioner. We've looked at that, there are a lot of big conventions that want to come into our area, we just don't have the facility for it. And as far as having three or four things go on at one time, that's not a problem, we have that right now. We have 28 buildings on our grounds that we can host multitude of different things, a lot of parking, so having another event go on, that wouldn't be a problem.
I can tell you where I've been, I haven't been to any of your meetings. So, you know, when you talk about engaging us, I haven't been invited to any of those meetings that you've been talking about for the last two years, Mark.
That's, that has to be, yeah. That would be your, your city staff, then. I mean, I, that's all I can say, is I know we've had lots of meetings over the last two years, that we've talked about the MOU, we've talked about the annexation and stuff like that, and, and you have seen that in the papers, you've, you've seen that, you and I have talked, just candidly on stuff like that. If there are questions, why, why haven't they been asked?
And I've been to a couple of them, Brian, with you, so I'm, I'm aware of it, that we should know, or that we know.
Any other questions?
Thank you. You, Brian?
So, if, if I'm hearing, you know, maybe a public engagement plan, with maybe an outline to review kind of the general plan, and then, and sort of start there, and, and see what you guys think about public engagement, and how to move forward, and again, get off kind of step one, and go to step two, take it one at a time.
Right. Plus, determine, like Commissioner Thorsted said, are we building a convention center? We looking at more of an expo center? Because I, there's been a lot of stuff in the media, and there's been a lot of conflicting stuff in the media. And to where we got to here, I think, quite honestly, all of us commissioners are surprised.
I won't, I won't follow suit with you on that, because I know exactly where we're at.
I think three of us are, but we all haven't been updated to, to get to this point. So, I think there's a lot of questions we have to get answered, so we know what direction we're going as a city, and how we're going to fund it, and what exactly is this going to be? Is it going to be a true convention center? Because when you think convention centers, you bring in a lot of big business. Is it going to be an expo center? To me, there's a difference, and I don't know if Charlie has any input tonight for us, but it would be...
Yeah, I think, I think...
Please, if you want me to have a question. Come on up.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Charlie Johnson, Convention and Visitors Bureau. Do you have a specific question, or do you want me to just kind of ramble?
Tell us what you think.
Well, I, I think, you know, I've been talking to Matt about this for a long time, and, and you all know, there's also a simultaneous discussion in fits and starts in Fargo about the possibility of any kind of meeting space, and I emphasize the fits and starts about that. I think, all I know is we need more meeting space in this metropolitan area. That I know for sure. There have been feasibility studies already that have said that, done by the Fargo Dome, which so far hasn't led anywhere. Yes, it's a good question, what kind of facility will it would be? Will it be? Matt and I've had that discussion, I'm sure you're fine with me discussing that with these people, and about the location. The location, for, for a true convention center, probably not ideal for a true convention center, but if it's going to be a combination conference center and expo center, then you're talking about a different thing, and it would attract different kinds of things. You know, I'm being as honest with you as I can be, I believe I've been pretty consistent, Mr. Mayor, in this particular vein of discussion. At the same time, I guarantee you, and I say the same thing to anybody in Fargo, that the minute you give us an opening date, we'll start booking stuff in there, trying to book stuff in there, and we will book some things in there. There are lots of things that would like that kind of facility to come to. There are some things that we can't book now, that probably wouldn't want to book in that particular region, you know, but I think we would find things that would go there. Could it peacefully coexist with other meeting space in Fargo? Depends on how much meeting space gets built, or if it ever gets built. We need more meeting space of some kind in the community. To Commissioner Hanson's statement, and also, I think Commissioner Simmons talked about this, I believe it's true that convention centers should not be expected to make money. to make money. Um, I think facilities, some of them do, some of them break even. I think that would be a great goal to have, to have something that would break even in its operating costs. You're probably never gonna recoup your construction costs. Uh, the private sector, unless you're in Las Vegas or Orlando, is probably not going to build its own convention facilities. Uh, I mean, Las Vegas, every hotel has its own convention center. I don't believe the cities helped them build that, do they? But that's a whole different animal because they have so many people coming there constantly. Uh, we don't have that kind of demand, but we have enough demand that we could certainly use some more meeting space. But most places, governments build the convention space, as near as I can tell, and hope that they will break even on the operating side of it. Um, but as somebody mentioned earlier, it's, it's, uh, what does it do for the community? It brings more people into the community. And, and, you know, my, my final thought on this, unless you have questions, is, you know, it's really up to each individual city where they see themselves down the road. And it's a good, solid, legitimate question, and you do need to get public engagement, I think, for these kinds of things. Uh, but the question is, do you think you can gain by building these things? Do you want your city to look to the future and be able to bring in more events? And is this the kind of facility that will work for you in that regard? Uh, it's the same, I will say the same thing to Fargo City Commissioners. Uh, if, if you want to improve the visitor status of your community and get more people coming to town and perhaps help the economy that way, I don't think perhaps, but I'll say perhaps, cause you know, you gotta cover yourself sometimes, right? So I think these things, we know these things do bring economic activity into communities. Is that what you want to pursue? Or do you want to say, you know, I think we're okay the way we are and we'll just, you know, lay back and see what happens? Or some private entity brings it in? Or let the growth occur naturally? Or we'll spend our money somewhere else? Those are decisions cities have to make. All, uh, CBB guys can say to you is that, you know, we could really use some more meeting space somewhere in this community, and I hope, you know, before I die, someone builds it somewhere. Um, it would be great to have it, but, uh, it's a decision that you're gonna make based on what you think your priorities are in the city.
Any questions to Charlie? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I just have one, Charlie. I know that you have a lot of, you just mentioned, you do a lot of, um, reviews and stuff and have a lot of information analysis as far as, but I would imagine, and if we get past this portion of it and got to do, at least, I would imagine at some point, we would still have to do a study as far as feasibility. Correct?
I think, I think Matt is correct to, to, to steer you in that direction. I think it would be a good idea for you to do, you know.
But we're not the experts. I mean, no different than Fargo. You gotta have somebody come in to say.
Yeah, and I think specifically for a facility like this, yes. Uh, Fargo Dome did a feasibility study a few years ago. From that study, it was pretty obvious that the community could use one, but that was a different kind of facility than you're talking about building here in a different space. So yeah, feasibility study would probably be a good idea because you get a better handle on what kind of events would come. I'd like to see it, frankly. It would be good for us to know what kind of events that experts like that would see coming in.
Well, we'll have Matt get ahold of you after this too.
Uh, Matt gets ahold of me quite frequently since he's on our board.
Okay, good.
So I don't, I don't have to worry about him getting ahold of me. Uh, uh, but yeah, I think the CB board would certainly enter, CBB board would entertain a request to help find some funding for that feasibility study. Not to pay for the whole thing, but you know, uh, I can't speak for the board, but I'm sure they would entertain the request.
Thank you.
Do you have an estimated cost at all? All part numbers?
Which part?
For the convention center?
Yeah, so the way the concept started, um, was rather than saying, A, you know, here's the wish list, have no idea if you can build it, um, we started with a budget of, uh, between 20 and 25 million dollars. And the rationale behind that is that there's economic development devoted, sales tax which could be leveraged to bond. I'm not saying you'd wanna do it or not, that's a thought process. The other thought process is you could use tax increment financing to buy down the, um, the amount of money that the, the sales, economic development portion of the sales tax would have to cover over a period of years. Um, with that, um, we had an architectural group donate pro mona, a ton of time and energy just to get a concept on paper, cause without a concept on paper, no one can talk about anything. Um, and so we've, we've gone through that, you know, iteration. And then it kinda became clear at that point in time through the community discussion that you kinda gotta get to a point where you're talking about some tangible stuff to really make a decision or get it to go away, one of the two. And that's kinda how we got here. But the, the proposed idea is, like I said, somewhere between 20 and 25 million dollars. I would think a feasibility study or experts would help us determine that. I'm not the person to, you know, give you any insight there. Um, also, I think you'd also vet out, you know, is this type of facility, you know, the type you wanna build? I, I think the conversation, convention center, exposé is certainly warranted. Um, you know, the, the conversation that's happening in Fargo, they're talking about a highly finished space. Um, taking a highly finished space and putting it out at the fairgrounds, probably not ideal way out on the edge of town. However, if you have a highly flexible space that can, you know, wear both hats and get it done within a budget, you know, it might fit in very, very well. And so those, again, are the philosophical discussions for you guys to chew on and, and start talking about tangible things to make a decision, public engagement, that sort of thing.
John, if we were going to spend 25 million dollars and build something, would we, would we have to go to the community to pass a bond issue to accomplish that?
Well, it, it depends upon the funding source. As, as Matt had alluded, we had contemplated, at least Matt had contemplated with Tina, the possibility of using sales tax. You can bond against sales tax dollars without an election. Also, there was the concept of using TIF as a revenue source. You could bond against TIF revenues also without an election. And so that was some of the concepts that, uh, Matt and Tina had discussed, and we tried to integrate into the agreement to allow the flexibility so that you could pull either the trigger of a sales tax bond issue or a TIF bond issue or a combination thereof.
Okay.
Yeah, and my assumption going forward, and I know I, I can speak for staff too, is that there, you know, an election might be something you wanna go forward to, but there, there'd have to be community engagement once you have information to engage the community with. And that's really kind of the sticking point we're at now is where, where do we go?
Well, how about this? If, uh, Matt sometime in the future comes back with kind of a, how much would a feasibility study cost? Um, uh, would it be, uh, and a public engagement plan? And, uh, how does, how does that sound for us, everybody? Brian?
I'm okay with that, yeah. I'd, I'd like both. I'd like to see public engagement, but I'd like to see, you know, what, what a feasibility study would cost, because we're not gonna know anything until we, you know, I mean, and I don't think that's gonna cost us anything to get that information at all, right? So there's no cost to it at this point. You, you okay with that or you're not okay with that? No?
I'm gonna leave it pretty much at, but no more, no more revisions, John, to anything. Okay?
Okay. Does that give you some direction?
Yeah, exactly. That's exactly what I need is what, what, you know, what do you wanna see next or how do we, where do we go from here?
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Uh, Tina?
Okay, good evening, Mayor Commissioners. I only have one piece of information for you that, kind of it's three pieces, but it's one. Um, just a reminder of the election this coming Tuesday, uh, not this Tuesday, a week from Tuesday, on the 12th. Um, and because of that, I wanted to go through the procedure for, um, newly elected officers and how that would all work. Um, what happens is, okay, I can't read your writing. What we have is, actually, the election will take place and the, the new candidates technically take office at 12:01 a.m. on June 26th. So what will happen is our next commission meeting will be a regular commission meeting with the five of you. And then we will have a special meeting set up for June 26th. There will be the organizational meeting and the installation of any new members. So I just wanted to get, make that clear because I'd been asked a question and I couldn't quite remember exactly. So that is how it is handled. I, John looked it up for me in Centricote just to make sure.
Wasn't you in 18th, Commissioner White's last meeting then?
Yes.
Bring dominance. Bring dominance. Your last punishment.
Yes. Do you have any other questions for me?
We were just worried I wasn't gonna show up, right?
Yeah. You still have to kind of read the organizational one, cause you have to be moved from your seat before you can go. Go there. Oh, okay. Oh, Chris has a more item for you. Thank you.
Uh, Mayor Commissioners, this is more of a operation and, uh, maintenance type issue. Just wanna hand this out real quick. Uh, with the, with all the construction that's been going on in town, we've been pushing a lot more traffic down Veterans Boulevard. And, uh, I've been getting several complaints about the intersection of Veterans and 23rd. There's been a lot of different concerns about mainly the, the left turn movements. Uh, I was down there today with, with Commissioner Simmons. We're looking at the intersection and one thing I, I saw that we can do under, under maintenance funds is we could quickly re-stripe the northbound lane, add a second northbound lane. We'll also have to do a, a signal light modification, hang a new head up there. But it's something we can do under maintenance funds, uh, should be well less than $10,000. But it should at least be able to alleviate that northbound left and maybe, might be able to squeeze out some more time for some of the other phases. So I, I think it's just a quick, uh, operational maintenance type thing, but I think I wanted the commission to be aware of, of this improvement. So available for any questions you have.
Any questions to Chris?
Chris, can you, can you, can you? It creates a few problems as Chris mentioned in the first year about COVID. This is helping with problems. Just one.
Thank you.
You need a motion for that, Chris, in all of it?
I don't.
It's informational.
Any other non-agenda items? If not, do I hear a motion to adjourn? So moved. Moved in second, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Thank you, everyone.